Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order. If you would kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson. Carmandy.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Maron.
Here. And I will accept a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept or approve Consent Agenda Item A and 3C through 3L.
Any discussion on the motion?
I second the motion.
Oh, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion is unanimous. Item removed from the Consent Agenda. So I will make a motion on 3B to consider and approve a transfer in the amount of $12,000 from contingency miscellaneous to social services expenses contribution for the emergency shelter.
Second.
All right, and I believe this was pulled off by Counselor Carmody.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, if you could just give us some background on this item, if that's okay?
Sure. We became aware sometime over the winter holidays between Christmas and New Year's that Columbus House was not going to open the emergency shelter. We made efforts to contact Columbus House, to discuss with them how and why this wasn't happening. We ended up in a meeting with them in the middle of January where we went through what their process is to deal with somebody in need of shelter on an emergency basis. We were advised that somebody in need of shelter from the cold should call 211 to arrange placement and transportation to shelters in either Middletown, Meriden, or Hamden. Our emergency management team, including the fire chief and the deputy director, were involved. We made provisions for transportation should that be necessary so that if some town vehicle wasn't available for that, that we put aside some funds to create an Uber opportunity to drive those persons to shelters. We had a follow-up meeting with Columbus House to find out what it would take to open the emergency shelter. The budget we were given with staffing was $18,000 a month. So we thought we should try to fund six weeks to try and catch the balance of the season. We had the Director of the United Way present for some of the discussion. We talked about splitting the funding between town funds and seeking private partnership support. So to get to $28,000, we had $2,000 available in the emergency management budget. That check can just be written and forwarded. The transfer that's been moved is $12,000 from contingency to be donated, contributed to operating the shelter. And then we've been speaking with private partners to come up with the balance. And I believe Ms. Harlow is here and will confirm. We do have a substantial contribution from the Regan Foundation. So with this $12,000, we'll be able to get Columbus House to open and operate the shelter for six weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to commend you for springing into action here and helping our most vulnerable members of our community during these cold winter months find a safe and secure place to stay. And thank you to Maria and everyone in the community, Counselor Regan, for making this happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion on this item? Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mayor, how many people, do we know how many people use? Well, first of all, how many beds are in the shelter? And how many are used at a typical February, for example, or in the colder months?
The shelter has 15 beds, and its use-to capacity varies. But I know it was open last winter for, I believe, three months. And I believe it was used regularly. I don't know that it was full every night.
Okay, but we don't have any numbers on how many?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. I'm only asking because I'm wondering if it's $18,000 a month to run, if it's only a couple of people or three people, if there's not, you know, more cost-effective way? Even like, I would think even putting somebody, even putting somebody in a hotel, I would think would be cheaper than $18,000 a month. So I mean, having the numbers would just be helpful to make the decision before we transfer that amount of money.
Right. So we are only seeking 12 to contribute to half of running for six weeks. One of the issues that we encountered is that the 211 hotline isn't as perfectly staffed as we would like it. And if somebody doesn't happen to get through, you don't know if there's a bed to go to, and then you don't know if you're going to get a ride. You know, I can think of one instance this past season where somebody became homeless and Youth and Social Services was involved in that person's situation, went so far as to assure that there would be placement in one of the other area shelters. And for whatever variety of reasons that we can speculate, this person was not willing to leave Wallingford. So, you know, in that particular instance, maybe for one person, that's a lot of money. But I can't imagine that that would be the only situation in which that occurs. But again, if you wait too long to call 211 to try and find a placement, you might be out for the night.
Sure, okay. And we, with the current budget we're in, we gave Columbus House $30,000, correct?
That's correct.
And was that with the stipulation that they would be running the shelter? Or was that no stipulation, that was just a general $30,000? What was that for?
So that was their, their request was actually $35,000. And it was their typical request. And we funded 30, we got no pushback. We also weren't given numbers that suggested that they would not be able to operate the emergency shelter with that contribution. It's the same contribution that we've given them for years. And we were then advised that that contribution covers operating the four family residences that are in the back of that property.
And those will, those are not affected by this, correct?
Not affected. As a matter of fact, our understanding is that they're fully occupied.
Okay, good. All right, yeah, I'm supportive of this, but I would like to, if we could get the numbers, just for our benefit, it would be nice to know just how many people are using the shelter, just going forward, so we have those numbers.
We'll be having further discussions because in the coming budget, we're going to determine what level of support is necessary. And we're gonna, you know, as a group here, we're gonna have to make a decision as to whether or not we fund the operation of that shelter for an entire season next year. We're not, we're not gonna start the cold season and find out afterwards that that shelter is not available for people.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Excuse me, did you say it was $18,000 a month?
That's correct.
All right, so $18,000, 15 beds, 30 days, it's $40 a person. So that's cheaper than a hotel. A lot of volunteers, a lot of other fundraising efforts go into this. Clearly, a massive breakdown in communication at some point. But thank you again to you and to all the participants that jumped into action to get us through what we have in front of us so that we can figure that stuff out later. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, the, my concern with this is, so we give these block grants to these different groups during budget time, right? And I'm certainly not laying this at the mayor's feet because this is how we've always done it. But I have concerns that, you know, we sort of give them the block grant with the assumption that they're gonna run a shelter. And then they, you know, ostensibly, a not-for-profit is still a business, right? And so on some level, they decided they didn't need to have our shelter for whatever reason, and they close it. So I guess my thought is maybe just for the council, going into the budget season, we should think of attaching some strings to some of the money we give, you know, to some of the, some of the groups as opposed to just sort of like a block grant. But, you know, Mayor, again, I appreciate you jumping into action because this is certainly a necessary item. And thank you to Counselor Regan and the United Way for their support of our shelter as well. Mr. Testa.
Thank you. I apologize for coming in in the middle of this conversation. My concern is very simple. Is it still in our best interest to have this relationship exist where this organization is running our shelter? If you already discussed this before I got here, I apologize. But I'm hoping that at some point, maybe that will be a part of the discussion as well. Instead of, what do we give them at budget time? I was here, I've been here, you've been here, we've been here a while. I remember when we made this change. I don't remember all of the discussions that happened, but there was a time where we ran our own shelter with volunteers and so forth. It was difficult. And we decided to enter into this arrangement. But to discover that this year, that all of a sudden, it wasn't open. I'm a pretty easygoing person, but I was, I didn't want to hear anything. I did not want to hear an excuse. I was like, this is inexcusable, that this is not open. And the fact that it happened makes me want to reconsider the whole relationship. And I'm, and I, I'm sure, knowing you as I do, Mr. Mayor, that this is also in your mind. So I'm hoping that we will consider that as well.
If I may, the challenge is that, so the town itself didn't own or operate the emergency shelter. There was a nonprofit group in town that operated it. When they turned over operation to Columbus House, they quitclaim the real estate. So Columbus House owns the real estate. So that hamstrings our ability to decide, to make global decisions about that unique piece of real estate. So, sure.
Thank you. Anyone from the public on this item? Sir? Please. Just your name, name and address for the record.
Matthew Camerata, 28 Mapleview Road. So, good evening, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, again, for bringing this together. Just to address some of the questions, I was a part of the organization. I've been involved since 2009. It was a volunteer-run organization for a long time. The challenge that has not been discussed is that my, and my involvement today, I know the folks at Department of Housing very well. I'm still active with them. I have been involved with Columbus House. I was a former board chair of the Wallingford Emergency Shelter when it was 100% volunteer-run. I was the board chair of Columbus House. The biggest challenge is that funding, private and public, over the last 10 years has shifted away from emergency services and to affordable housing. It is the right thing to do because we collectively are looking to solve the long term and provide a long-term solution. The challenge that it creates is that in the short term, it exacerbates this issue. And unfortunately, for example, the Department of Housing pulled our funding in 2016. The Department of, the Department of Housing used to fund the shelter, and that, that went away completely. That's a challenge. And so the Department of Housing is focused on affordable housing, as they should. There's the Connecticut Time to Own program, there's the Build for CT program. These are all really important programs. But there's been no money for emergency services, so I just wanted to make that one point. In terms of, I know you mentioned, it's always been a privately-owned entity. It's important to note that those four family units, there was not one dollar of public money that was used to build those. Those 100% private donations, which is quite remarkable for this community. So I commend the entire community for coming together. It's never been a lack of support from the community. I think it's just a matter of community dollars, where are the dollars coming from? So that was just one point I wanted to make. I agree that there was a communication breakdown. I'm happy to take some responsibility for that. There was a new mayor, there's a new CEO at Columbus House, and there's actually another one. The CEO there is a temporary one. They expect to have one in place, a permanent one, I would say, in the next few months. I'm no, I'm no longer involved on the board, but that's what I've heard. And I would hope that we have these conversations in June, July, and August, and not in December and January. I know, I'm very confident in talking from business leaders with Maria, Chris Ulbrich, and many others, that there will be support for this from a public, a private contribution perspective. So we appreciate what you're doing and your consideration to make sure you're funding it. I think that's all. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Just given my experience with the shelter, I've been involved with it for over 15 or 16 years. I understand your concern. It's a, it's a totally legitimate one. It's just, it's really comes down to a challenge of funding. When it was run by volunteers, I've been there, I've been, I did intake. When you served on the board of Wallingford Emergency Shelter, it was not a matter of what committee you're gonna be on. It's what night you're gonna, you're gonna do intake. There were safety issues, there were health issues, there were mental health issues. There are substance abuse issues that volunteers are just not equipped to address, which is why you need staff, staff members there. Columbus House did an incredible job taking over the shelter. And the services that they're providing to those four families on an ongoing basis is second to none. So I'm very, very much in strong support of what they do, and I just wanted to make that comment. So again, like I said, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. But otherwise, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council? All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public on this? All right, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson.
Yes.
Carmandy.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Regan.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Maron.
And I vote yes. Motion is unanimous. Moving on to public question and answer. Are there any questions from the public to the council? Please.
Good evening. John Vow, 8 Perkins Drive here in Wallingford. I'm here to remind the council that at some point in December or January, you should have received some communication from Wallingford Project Graduation 2025. Project Graduation is a post-graduation party put on by volunteers for our seniors. We've got approximately 400 or so high school seniors. Let's be clear which seniors we're talking about here. Seniors will be graduating from Lyman Hall and from Sheehan High School. This event is very expensive. Each year, they raise around $25,000 to $30,000 to put this together. I understand that last year, there were three people who made this happen, and they were able to raise the money. Unfortunately, because there are only three, they weren't able to provide a nest egg to help move this year forward as they would like to have. So this year, they're seeking to raise about $26,000 to host the event for all of our students, to bus them to the event center, to have them, have that opportunity to let off a little steam, have a good time, probably in a more safe environment than if anybody's my age, what might have happened in the, in the 70s and 80s when you graduated from high school. But what we're really seeking from the council, from the mayor, is help amplify the voices. There are fewer than a dozen people working on this project right now. They need to raise, as I mentioned, about $26,000 to put on the event this year. They'd like to raise an additional nest egg to get the kids next year started so that those families don't have to start from square one. And we've been seeking to promote this around town. A thousand letters have been sent to Wallingford business owners to hopefully get them to donate a little bit. And I mean, at the Carini Bowl, I know a few there were, were there on Thanksgiving. It was not a pretty day. But I, my wife Morgan, and Amy Kirwan from North Main Street were there in the rain, seeking to get volunteers and, and all the voices that you have, with your business contacts, with your personal contacts, with friends and family. Please help to get them involved. And so my question to you then would be, would you please consider attending Valentine's Day-themed Zumba dancing on the 16th? That's gonna be at the Hungarian Hall up the street. On March 1st at Lyman Hall High School, there's gonna be a mattress fundraiser. If you need, I'm not kidding, if you need new mattresses, this is an opportunity to do what you need to do for your household and help support these kiddos as well. And a bingo night at Sliders on the 13th of March. There'll be more throughout the year. So really, I'm not here to complain, I'm not here to ask for your money, but rather, help spread the word. Help this event really cap the year for our high school seniors and provide an excellent opportunity for them to enjoy and celebrate their achievement in a safe and thrilling environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public? Miss? Oh, and I'm sorry, before, before you go, Mr. Vow, Project Graduation is available to all kids, not just Sheehan and Lyman Hall grads, correct? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, miss, please continue.
Hi, I'm Natalie Melma, and I live at 138 Center Street. I'm here tonight because I saw on the Consent Agenda the LPC Grant. And it is a grant that I'm very passionate about, whether I am a part of the Coalition or not. It is a very important grant for the organization to have and use effectively. And with the upcoming budget season ahead of you, I, I feel like I need to say very loudly when funds are appropriated, that it would be so amazing if Town Council or other powers-to-be follow that funding to make sure that it is used to its utmost potential, that not only is it used appropriately, but it's used to benefit the Wallingford community. Because it's not called Coalition for the World, it's Coalition for a Better Wallingford. And from what I saw in my final months at the Coalition for a Better Wallingford, the message was getting a little hazy. And I anticipate that this year could be similar, but I think with ample support from leadership, it could be better. So that's kind of very important to me, that I made sure that I came here tonight in the little time that I had to share that with you. I am supportive of the Coalition for a Better Wallingford message and mission. And without that piece in the community, I think we're gonna see a lot of kids slip and fall through the cracks that I'm already seeing, and I haven't been gone all that long. I am sad about the Narcan Initiative because that was something that was very important to me for a very long time. The more that I have learned about the structure of prevention work, the more powerful I see it being in our community and the little changes that it has made. I feel as though if the Coalition continues to get away from that original strong message and not rededicate its time, financials, and efforts to that, that it's gonna get away from its original mission. And I don't want to get it twisted. I'm not here out of spite, I'm here because I want to see it be successful. And I just ask that you pay very, very special attention to a very important organization in this community as you go forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to Item 6, Discussion of Old Business. Mr. Farrell, do you have an update on Hinnbrook Lane?
I do. Corporation Council Small has set up a meeting with the developers' new attorney, which will be attended by the developers' old attorney, and she's hopeful that progress will be made.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, update on community pool?
Yes, the architect's work is done. And the purchasing agent has asked for a meeting with the architect so that we can prepare the bid specs and put it out to bid. That meeting should take place next week.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And how about an update on the town building maintenance assessment?
Last thing.
Mr. Chairman, we'll combine Items 7 and 9, if that's okay with you?
Please.
If that's okay with you?
Please.
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-206B with respect to the workers' compensation claim settlement of Thomas Rogiro, and that we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
All right, any, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session. We are now in executive session.
Yeah, we're... I will call this meeting back to order. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion is unanimous. Madam Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the workers' compensation claim settlement of Thomas Rogiro as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Motion carries. Onto number 10, discussion and analysis of the 2024 Budget Year End Audit, known as the CAFER. Vice Chair Tad, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just before we start, I have spoken with the comptroller and the mayor briefly, and the chairman. And our hope tonight is for this to be kind of more of a discussion, so I have a lot of different items I want to go over kind of page by page through the audit, if you want to follow along. But rather than me keep the floor for the whole thing, if anybody has anything during it, during any specific topic that you'd like to jump in on, the chairman is okay with that. So with that, the purpose of this is basically just, I think, you know, every year we get the audit, this is the audit for the budget year ending 2024. So we received this back in December. And I think there's a lot of good information in here. I know I always pour over this every year. And I think especially going into budget season is just a good thing to look at. So I made some notes and highlighted some things I think might just be helpful for us to take a look at. Mr. Senna, did you have anything you want to say to start, or do you want me to just go right into it?
Go right ahead.
All right. He's excited for this. So first of all, for anyone following along, page, Roman numeral, page seven. So this was the comptroller's summary letter. It's noted under local economy that real estate values have increased. I just want to talk about this for a minute, because I think we've, at least I've been getting questions about the mill rate and people's property values going up and how that's going to affect the mill rate. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that. The property values going up doesn't necessarily mean that that is what your taxes are based, well, your taxes are based on that, but we would be able to hopefully lower the mill rate. So I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to explain that just for people to understand how the revolve works into the mill rate.
With the caveat that Mr. Senna can clarify if I get in the weeds.
Absolutely, whoever would like it to.
Yeah, the way we're going to budget is we're gonna budget for what we need, we're not gonna budget for more than that. And the mill rate is a calculation based upon the value of property to meet the town's total budget needs. So the mill rate gets adjusted every year. It's been incredibly rare that we have a same mill rate from budget year to budget year. There's always some variation depending upon whether the budget goes up or property values go up. So very likely that the mill rate is going to be reduced for this coming budget year, and somewhat significantly.
Thank you. The other thing to note on that?
Can I just add one thing?
Oh, absolutely.
So we did revolve, and the good thing is, everything went up. So it's not like the real estate went up and businesses went down, that's bad. So everything went up, and it should bring the mill rate down. But again, you know, when we prepare the budget, we figure out what we need, and the taxes is the last piece, and that's what determines the mill rate.
Great, thank you. Yeah, that's a great point. So commercial and residential both went up, which is positive. And also, just to note on that page, the town's unemployment rate at the end of the fiscal year is 2%, which was less than the year before, which was at 3.2. So that was some good news there. Grand list growth, so it looks like we had a grand list growth of 1.08% over the prior year, so that's always a positive. The next page, page eight, I just highlighted that it's noted here that the primary goal of the town is to maintain and expand a diversified industrial and commercial tax base. So that's a big thing. I know it's important for me, we focus a lot on that, trying to get, you know, as much business, be supportive of our businesses, and get that commercial and industrial, you know, have a lot of that so that the tax burden is falling less on residential. So everything that we can do to support that, I think, is always a great thing. So I was happy to see that in there. Page nine, this would be for Mr. Senna. So it says the town intends to utilize the remaining balance of the CRRA funds for capital or emergency needs. Would you be able to just tell us what the balance of that is?
Yeah, so we're at the end of the road with this. If I can get you the exact number.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so that's winding down. All right.
So we'll either depend, if there's a small capital project in one of the department's budgets, we might pull it out of the general fund and fund it here. Or, you know, at this point, we could just transfer it into the general fund as a revenue.
Okay.
But that's probably going to be the last time you're going to see that paragraph in this letter.
Yeah. Yeah, I have to say, in the budget, too, probably the last year for that. All right. Does anyone have anything they want to jump in with yet? Or let's keep going. All right. The police headquarters is also mentioned on this page. So that, I know I sent an agenda request on that, so I think we'll probably go into that a bit more in the future, but that's going to obviously have an effect on the budget, the bonding for that. So we'll go deeper into that in a future meeting. All right, and then I'm on page 11 of your letter. Okay, so this is something we talked about at budget time last year and hopefully have a little discussion this year again. But it's noted that we attempt to avoid entering the short-term market by utilizing the town's favorable cash position and self-finance at least a portion of each project's cost to reduce debt issuance. So I think that's a positive thing. I think, you know, when we pay cash for things, you know, we're not paying interest on it, so we can use that. But I know we've had discussions in the past with the budget of how much we like to have sitting in there. And so I think one time it was floated around that we like to have 10%. Would it be possible, and I guess this is for the mayor, would it be possible to consider this year with our budget stating how much we want in reserves in order to get a good bond rating? I think Chairman Maroon had mentioned it last year, possibly have a line item that says this is the amount, rather than it just kind of being a vague number that we just say, well, we want a lot to keep a good bond rating, but we don't have an actual number.
I feel like we do. I'll try and state it more clearly, but we're always looking to keep that near 10% reserve, you know, reserve fund. So yeah, I've seen it in budgets prior to mine, so I'll make sure that it's clear.
Yeah, that's wonderful, because I think, yeah, for us to know that we want 10%, and that's, at least that we know, and it's out there, that that's the number we want to keep.
So, and just to be clear, that 10% is of the expenditure budget. And it's, that's, the 10% is what we want in undesigned, not the total fund balance.
Correct, absolutely. Yep, thank you for clarifying.
But we always use the expenditure side because the revenue has the 7.9 plug in it, so.
Yeah, and I think we'll probably get to that in a couple minutes, but yeah, the...
Can I, so on that point, so when you say, you're saying the line on the CAFER that's unassigned fund balance is where you're considering that money is coming from, correct?
That's the 10%.
Right, okay. Okay, and so that number was 22 million, I believe, according to the CAFER, which was 3 million more than last year. So if we're talking surplus, 3 million is essentially the amount of, the total amount of the surplus between this year and last year. Is that appropriate to say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, please continue.
No, no, thank you. The only other thing I just wanted to note on this page is that I wanted to congratulate Mr. Senna because you did get an award for this audit. Your office got an award, so I thought that was great. So the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the town of Wallingford for its annual comprehensive financial report. So congratulations to you and your office, certainly.
So just, I appreciate it, thank you, but just, so you got the award for that in the prior year. So we did apply for this, but we won't get the, we won't know until September. But, I mean, we'll get it. It's, basically, they go through and then they make comments, and then you have to fix, you know, they like nitpick it, and then you have to fix the comment, you fix the comment, you're fine. So we did apply for it, I'm expecting we will get it again. But the actual audit that we have has not received the award yet.
So this is the prior?
Yeah, so if you look at the certificate, it's for the 2023 audit.
Right, okay.
So that was accounting hubris we just heard, is that what we're getting?
So, so it's pretty tough not to get it. Once you have it established, you know, the first year you're applying and you've never done it before, it's more difficult than when you've been doing, I think the town has been getting it for over 20 years.
Well, that's wonderful.
The opposite of hubris.
You get a, you know, you hear about a lot of towns mismanaging money, so if we're getting an award for that, I'm happy. All right, anybody have anything they want to jump in with yet? All right, so now we're on, I'm on page five of the actual audit now. So under financial highlights. All right, so this is something, and Chairman Maroon just kind of touched on it, but I think there's some confusion out there about the surplus amount. And sometimes we hear it was, we've been hearing lately it's around 10 million, but it's not really, so under financial highlights, it explains this. So the town's total net position increased by 9.4 million. But the 22 million unassigned is really where that surplus will come in. So, Mr. Senna, would you just be able to kind of explain that in layman's terms of where it's the net of, the surplus, net surplus is about 3 million, correct?
Are you talking about the percent?
I'm sorry, 2 million. Yeah, so the net surplus for this year, for this audit, would have been $2 million, correct?
So it's tough to, so the section you're highlighting right here is actually talking about not just the general fund, it's the statement of net position, which combines every fund in the town, including the utilities.
Okay.
So it's tough to there. If we go to... If you go to exhibit three, I think it's three. The net change in fund balance, it's page 20, it's exhibit four. The net change in fund balance for the general fund was 1.9 million.
Yeah, okay. Perfect, okay, so when you take the utilities, okay. Got it, so 1.9 million in the general fund is the surplus year over year.
Correct.
For that year, okay. All right, and then I know you have some things that are unassigned and other things that the money's sitting there, but we can't use it because there's things that we're, you know, we have, that money's already been allocated for, so I know that comes into play with that, too.
All right, so if you go to page, probably 19. If you go to page 18. And it shows the breakdown of fund balance.
Yes.
So that the three, so the 3,000 is a prepaid expense, you'll see the rate matching up above on the prepaid items. When they're committed, that is appropriations in force. So during the budget season, for the town, it was 672,000, and for the Board of Edits, their 2% fund, which was 1,172, so that gets you to the 1,844. The 8,381 takes into account 7.9 that was used to, for the next year's budget, and then it was 481,000 of encumbrances, which was half was for the Board of Ed, half was for the town. I can get that exact number, but it's around, it was probably about half.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Okay.
So that makes up the components.
Perfect. All right. All right, so page 10. So the section on the general fund. I know that the two of us have kind of talked about this the other day a little bit, but when we talk about the general fund and, you know, what happens year over year in a surplus or a deficit. There was, there was a, I mean, a surplus is a, it's a good thing in one sense, because it's better than having a deficit, in my opinion. But it's also a bad thing because that means that you overtax people. But we looked at that, we were talking about, you don't want to punish the departments for not spending. So we don't want to be in a position where the departments think that at the end of the year, if I don't spend this money, then next year, they're not going to give me that money, and then they just start frivolously wasting money. And, you know, you assured me that's not happening with our department, and so it's kind of, I think, a tricky balance to kind of get spot on. So for me, when I look at this page and, you know, we ended up with a surplus, I think, I think for me, what we want to look at going into the next budget is, you know, what do we do with that money? So we ended up with a bit of a surplus. I'm looking at the chart with, you know, the prior 15 years I have here. And, you know, we did have edits to the mayor's veto, this is the prior administration, but we did have edits to that. It was vetoed, and we overrode the veto, and so we ended up actually taxing less than what the prior administration would have, and we still end up with a $2 million surplus. So when we look at the history of that, I think even though there's a surplus, that means you overtax people, the question for me becomes like, what do we do with that money? So, you know, do you let it sit in the general fund and that just keeps it growing and growing? Or do we decide at budget season, you know, we want to take a look at this, and maybe we want to spend it on something specific, or we want to, you know, decide together how we want to handle that? But I think at some point, we have to look at, you know, how do you get that money back to the taxpayers? And so there's a lot on this page 10 about the general fund that, you know, we could discuss, but that was kind of the summation of it for me. So I don't know if anybody else has anything on that. All right.
Can I just say something?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
So the budget each year, very important document, it's the roadmap of what we're allowed to spend. But the audit is the general overall health of the town. And you've got to, you can't look at one year and say, oh, we had a surplus, we need to give that back because, you got to look at, every year, the budget keeps going up. So we're looking at, we're probably going to hit $200 million in this next budget coming up. So 10% surplus is, you know, $20 million is what needs to be reserved, and our reserves are not that high, to be honest with you. If you, you know, I looked at Suddington, because Suddington's probably one of the easiest comparables, their fund balance right now is $40 million.
Unassigned?
Not unassigned total. So, but, so our, we have a healthy fund balance, but it's not, you know, we're not flush, you know, and that, that number is important. The rating agencies will not tell you, there is no set number. But, so, in the Northeast, they let us be in that 10%, 10% range. But if you, you know, when I go to conferences and stuff, when you look at the fund balance in the Midwest, it's almost $50 million, you know, it's 25, 30% of. So it's just the way their structure is different, but, you know, our fund balance is good, but it's not something where we want to just let it go.
Mr. Reynolds?
Um, yeah, I was, so I read through all this. Thank you for putting it on the agenda. And I had kind of like overview thoughts on it that I maybe I'll express a little bit later, but using this Suddington example, do you, do we have any understanding of what their debt obligation is in addition to what they? Because the thing that I found interesting is that, like, when you look at how much money we have in debt, like to the average person, you'd be like, wow, that's a lot of money. It is, like, trust me, none of us could just whip out a check. But, you know, we're allowed to carry something like nine times the amount by state statute, which I'm not suggesting. But what I'm, but what I'm pointing at is the statement that you had pointed out, Counselor Tada, about how we sort of use some of our cash to sort of offset what we, you know, what we invest in, and given what we're about to look at, I'm guessing from what those maintenance reports on the buildings are, and then the whole other, you know, let's just not talk about schools tonight. But is it possible that part of our stewardship with this money and our lack of desire to bond out projects are somewhat contributing to one another?
I will admit, our debt level is probably lower than most towns, but it's not going to be for all. We have, you know, I'm trying, working on bonding soon, and we're looking at probably another 8 million to finish up the police station, $4 million for Fairfield Boulevard. There was a boiler that was appropriated, so that's $13 million more that's coming aboard pretty soon. So I am not against bonding. You know, my predecessor didn't like to do it as much, but if it's appropriate, there's certain things you don't want to, you don't want to be bonding maintenance costs, you know, it's, so, yeah, this is all things, we, you know, there's a lot going on and things to look at. I can get you, I mean, you can, if you go to Suddington on their finance, just like we, ours is on their page, you can go look at Suddington's. I didn't look at their debt section.
I, yeah, no, and I'm not, I wasn't expecting you to have that. I was just, that was what sort of struck me, I guess, in my overarching, was that, you know, yeah, we have money in the bank, and we don't have a lot of debt, considering what the limit would be. And then, but, and then I'm just sort of curious how we arrived at like $7 million to just carry over year over year that we never spend, but we can talk about more of that later. I'll let you keep going. Thank you.
So that, that number is kind of, you know, it kind of hangs out there, but if we don't use that number, believe it or not, then we have to raise more taxes. So, but there's, there's only so much you can, you can go. You know, you can't say we're going to, you know, you can't use 10% of the budget to plug the budget, because then you don't really have a realistic budget.
I'm, yeah, no, I'm not suggesting that we pull the 7 million out and raise taxes that much, I'm just curious to know if we can carry over a pretty consistent amount a year over year that looks like kind of the same amount of money, then how do we not spend that money every year or get closer to spending it? Because if you looked at the information that Counselor Tada provided, most years, we maybe at best, what, 2 million? What, 1.6 million was the most we ever went into the hole on what we put?
Yeah, it looks like 1.7 back in 2005, but there's multiple years where it's zero.
Right, so we're carrying over money year over year, and we're not spending it, which, again, like, I'm not suggesting we shut down departments or get rid of jobs or anything like that, you know that I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that if we're going to really think about this stuff, we don't borrow any money to pay for anything, or we at least don't do it like other neighboring towns, and we keep carrying over money from our bank account to pad a budget that we never spend. So I was just, those are some of my impressions. Anyway, thank you.
So if I could speak to that, so when we, we come up with the expenditure budget, and that's the roadmap. So when we, we come up with the expenditure budget and, and that, that's the roadmap. So then, on the revenue side, I budget everything out and then you get to the tax. So that seven point nine is a cushion. So we're not, when, you're never going to hit anything on, right? So the reason why we don't spend, that we don't incur these definite, you know, the last thing in the world you want is for me to come and give, come here with, saying that we are seven point nine, we had a year seven point nine in the hole. Because now you don't have the money to balance the next budget. So there's mitigating factors. So, you know, we've been lucky in the last couple of years where we've been getting revenue in places that we weren't expecting. So if at budget time I knew that, then that would plug in and we could either reduce the seven point nine or you could reduce taxes. So, you know, with the interest rates, the way they were, it kind of, you had to buy into where they were going and we're always behind the ball. So we had a couple of years where, you know, four years ago, we were getting nothing. And then now you get one point five, we're, you know, this year, we're going to have, we're, we're already trending ahead of interest. We're at two million, I budgeted two million. So in this report, we had good interest and we, we didn't, so that was a plus. We also had one-time revenue from the state that came in. So positive revenue, more revenue coming in than what we thought, lessens what you have to spend. On the other end, so the Board of Ed, when you get your, the monthly reports, just consider the Board of Ed's spent because by statute, if they don't spend it, they get to carry it over anyway. So when you get the monthly reports, just schedule that as that's completely gone. On the town side, we've been having trouble filling positions. So that has, it rumbles through the, the budget and other things. So the departments have to ask, during the budget process, we ask for the full salary for the positions because you're giving the approval for those positions. Because we can't hire anyone unless there's funding in place. So if, so if they can't, if there's open positions, now we're not paying the salary. We've got benefit insurance, benefit, you know, pension, all that stuff is budgeted for them in different places and it's not coming in. So we're not, it's not a, a surplus because it's a positive variance. We didn't, we didn't spend everything, so it goes back in. But, you know, that, at the end of the day, the, the surplus is, we deal with actuals. This, this is the revenue we took in, this is what we spent. One point nine was the difference and, and that's, and if you look at a one point nine, you know, we're talking a hundred and ninety-something, a hundred and ninety, I think the current year's budget is a hundred and ninety-six, which is sticking in my head. But one point nine is one percent of that. I mean, one percent of a, coming in within one percent of a hundred and ninety-six million dollars is not that bad.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's over what we put in, right, though?
So, but I mean, just a little.
But that's, but that's over what we put in though, correct? So like that, that surplus is over the money that we put in. And that's, so the money that we put in, we deduct, and then that's what we are over with. But my point is, like, I can understand unfilled positions. And again, I'm not suggesting we cut them. But I'm just saying, like, I'm sort of trying to wrap my mind around it a little bit more and I'm not, and, and trust me, from somebody, and like, this is a lot of information and I'm not pretending that I have a super, you know, expert handle on it. I don't deal in necessarily financial data. But if we're putting in seven point nine million dollars and we're, and we're coming over that, and I get how and why and, and all of that, but at the end of the day, we still are going to take that money and put it back in. And, and it just feels like if we are able to take it and put it back and take it and put it back, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to understand, why don't we ever spend it? So while one point nine is one percent, anyway. A- and again, I'm not, I, I have no problem with the report. I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my mind around a little bit of this. And some of it has to do with the fact that we take six to seven million dollars of our own money, put it into the budget every year, we still raise taxes. And at the end of the year, we still have that six to seven million dollars in our hand. And oh, by the way, we might get more. It's just to me, um, that's my, that's my take on it. So anyway, I'll let other people talk. I see your hands up.
Mr. Testa.
I've been trying to get a handle on the strategy of our budgeting for many years. And I, I look at it this way. Take the, take the seven million dollars out of the equation. And imagine it doesn't exist. That's the budget. The estimates of expenditures and revenues are what they are. And I've always tried to think about how, how could we budget if we don't do that? And it's, it's an adjustment that I don't, I don't know how we could do. I'm open for suggestions because, for years, we would look at all this, we would pore over, I would pore over this and I'd be like, where the hell is it? What's going on here? And, you know, a little of this, a little of that. And it's, we say, if you say, if we did not, I mean, we're adding seven million dollars from the surplus or from the fund and we're still raising taxes. But in reality, that increase in taxes is what really was necessary to fund the budget. The seven million dollars was that insert that made it all balance out without a very difficult and awkward adjustment. I don't know what that adjustment would be. Because I, I look at it sometimes and I say, all right, we were seven million over. Where, where did we underspend? Because it's very easy to say we're overestimating expenditures, we're underestimating revenues, you know? So where did we underestimate the expenditures? So at the end of that, and I know someone could say to me, hey, look at the CAFR, you could figure it out. No, I can't. So we, we look at it, we say, department by department, line by line, who didn't spend what we budgeted? Where was it? A lot of it is unfilled positions. But literally go through the budget line by line and say, you, we budgeted a hundred dollars and you spent eighty. Who in their right mind would say, well, I only need eighty next year? Nobody. So there's always that issue. But you would have to do that to really identify where the budgeting was off for the next year. And that is such a complicated and frankly, difficult ex, exercise, I don't know if we could do it. I wish we could. I'm not thrown in the towel, but I'm saying it's just over all these years. And Tom Myers set this up many years ago. He built the current budgeting strategies and format that Mayor Dickinson followed for all these years. And it, you know, and we could argue about, did it work, did it not work? That's beside the point. We're talking about a, 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 a mechanical way of doing things. And they did this. And every once in a while, we did have to dip into that. What did that mean? That meant the budgeting that year was off. That's what that meant. It meant, whoa, they got a little tighter than they should have. And we actually spent more than we planned for. So we need to use a little bit of this cushion. Honestly, I don't even know if there's any point to what I'm saying. It's, it's, but you know what I mean? It's, I look at this and I, I wish I could figure it out.
I can send you a report tomorrow that will show you. I'll send you this report.
It's the way we budget. And if you really want to know, if you really want to impact our budget, remove that contribution and start from there. And have a ball. That's what you need to do. Because the, the, the contribution is just, I don't know. So that one number that prevents us from doing something, some would say dangerous, others would say necessary. I'm done. Thanks.
Can I respond to that? I can send you the final expenditure report that will show you where people didn't spend that would tie to the audit report. I'll send that out to you guys tomorrow. This, so in Connecticut, you have to, you have to pass a balanced budget. So the seven point nine is basically a plug to the revenue. We're not using the money, it's just staying in our pocket in case we need it. So if you were to take the seven point nine out of the, out of the budget equation, you're pretty much adding one point five mils to the tax. Everyone's saying we're overtaxing as it is. So do I like the seven point nine number? No, I think it's too high. I think we should be working to get it down. But, you know, some, some battles have to get fought at, fought at different times. But it, it's not, basically, it's just, it's money sitting in your pocket. It's not like we, we used it and then we, we gained it. It's, it's just stays there in case it's necessary.
So, but, and to respond to Counselor Testa and Counselor Reynolds to some degree, I think if you've watched the month-to-month reports, salary is the number one thing that drives the, the, the quote-unquote surplus, right? So the unassigned fund balance, I'm not sure if it's three million, but it's probably at least half of that is just simply salary. So I guess the problem with that for me is either one, did you not, did you need the position? Or more likely, are you not providing the service that you had sort of promised because you haven't filled the position, right? So I think to address the, both the surplus issue and sort of the, the maintenance issue in town, I think the, filling the positions that you have, that you've budgeted for, right, makes the most sense. So that, that's sort of my, my issue. I think in the time that I've been watching this, which started, you know, when I was on the board, that number, that seven point nine number has been as low as four million and it's been as high as like eleven million, right? And so I, that's the part that it's like the secret sauce that I could never really get my hands on is how come that number fluctuates so much? So I guess my question, Mr. Senna, is what, what are sort of the ingredients? I know this is a complicated question, but if you could give us like the, you know, the thirty-second pitch on what it is that makes that number vary so much?
I guess it's what the administration wants the mill rate to be at.
Suggesting that we use that number to balance? So you can limit the tax increase by taking more money out of reserves that you intend to put back at the end?
Correct.
So, a- and when we say we underestimate, underestimate expenditures and overestimate revenues, that's accurate in the sense that, like, in, in real numbers, it's done. But in terms of overestimating revenues, you're never going to collect a hundred percent, right? So we have a number, sort of a magical number that we think is what we're going to collect and we budget for that, even though we may collect more. Is that an accurate statement?
So on the revenue side, right, the, the only, the number for taxes is not going to go higher. All the other numbers, and it's a five-page report of, of the revenues, those are estimates. They, they can come in higher, lower, y- y- you don't, you don't know. So as the comptroller and an accountant, I follow the principles of conservatism. You do not want to put a revenue in that's not attainable because now it's a double hit. Because not only did you not get it, but you let people spend money that you, off of it, that you thought you were going to get. So our revenues are conservative, but they're, I, I wouldn't say they're underestimated. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. It does make sense. So underestimating, I didn't mean underestimate in, in the, in the sense that there's sort of like a, like a, like a, a sort of accounting standard that you would have when you look at your revenues. That you assume you're going to get, you're going to take a certain percentage of what the, you know, what the grand list is. So I think the problem for me, or the focus, I think, should be on how do we fill the positions that are not filled? Or, or eliminate those positions if that's the, if that's the direction we need to go. But, you know, like, you hear, like, I hear two complaints. One is that the taxes are too high and one is that we don't get enough services, right? And so those are sort of like both, two sides of the same coin. Because if you're, if you, all the positions are filled and you're providing the service, then it's like you don't have so much of a discussion on the taxes. So I guess that's where I kind of think that we need to go. I'm not speaking on behalf of the mayor certainly, but that's kind of like philosophically, I think that's where we need to be. Is figure out what's the right amount of service and then, and then go from there. So it's funny because we had some discussion about like, uh, the Christmas tree thing and picking up Christmas trees. And the discussion was like, is this a good expenditure of money? And it's funny because in a town where people complain that you don't get services, like, we picked this service as, and, you know, we could talk all day long whether that's a valuable item to have, but, you know, but that is a service the town provides, right? And so do people want more of that or, or less of that? And, you know, that's sort of the philosophical difference. But I'm sorry, back to you, Counselor Tada.
No, don't apologize. This is, this is great. Counselor Testa, this, actually, it's funny, this was the next thing I was going to bring up. So I, as I was looking through the audit, I also looked at our budget that we had passed. It was like I said, it was vetoed, we overrode the veto. So I pulled the, the changes we actually made in that budget. And, um, one of the, one of my proposals was to increase the, um, the amount that we're going to use from reserves by an additional two point nine million over what the mayor, and this is the prior mayor, what he had suggested. And just to basically get that mill rate down, but to balance it. And my theory, and what I explained at the time, was that we're never going to use that money. I mean, you, you could say thirteen million dollars, you could say twenty million. We all know we're never using that money because historically, we never have. And then, um, your motion to hopefully avoid a veto was to reduce that one by one point five because you thought we were getting too high, which, you know, I understand. And we did, and, um, and then it still got vetoed anyway. But, but to both of our points, to my original motion and then to your edit, we, we didn't use it. We didn't use any of it. So that is something I think going into this year, I'm interested in looking at, just like you were saying. And we can, we can talk more about that. But, uh, you know, we have the historical data on that now and, and I appreciate Mr. Senna's, you know, opinion on that too, because it's, it's tricky. And I know we were talking about grants and that's a very difficult thing, I think, for, for Mr. Senna's office to, you know, we get so many grants from the state and federal and for him to try to estimate that every year. You certainly don't want to underestimate that and end up in a jam. But I'm glad we're looking at this number and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll look at this more going into the next budget. The other thing that we did la, with that budget was we reduced the contingency account by two hundred thousand dollars from what the mayor had proposed. And then it also says on here, page eleven, that the town had three hundred fifty-four thousand remaining in the contingency budget in the CAFR. So that, I think, is something else we can maybe look at historical data on how much we use of that, uh, going to the next budget.
Can I speak towards contingency?
Please do, yes.
So our contingency is very low for the size of our budget. And there's two components of that. So the one that's for salaries, that, that's in there from HR for contracts that might be settled without trying to give the numbers away so that we can move the money. The other piece is for emergencies, something breaks. Right, so we've, if you want to look at historical data, four years is going to tell you, we didn't really use too much of it because we haven't had a bad winter. Well, I think we're experiencing right now our first bad winter where Rob's going to be coming up here asking for money for overtime, which we haven't had to do for a while. But if you look overall of, you know, when we come with contingency, it's, it's needed. And if you, if you cut that too much, we're just going to come back asking you to, to appropriate at another time. So it's, it's better to have it and not have to use it than to, to not have it be available.
Sure, yeah, absolutely understandable. I think our, you know, the, the sweet spot, I think we try to get at with the budget is what, you know, you don't want to overtax people for things you don't need, but you also want to make sure you're not going to end up in an emergency situation either. So I think that's what we kind of try to.
And then, and just for the record, who, who have people say we never spend anything out of contingency? We, we never will. It gets transferred to the proper account. You can't spend that contingency.
Correct, yes. Thank you for clarifying that.
And why have the mic before I forget? I had one comment I wanted to make. I had one comment I wanted to make.
Sure.
So, when you guys pass the budget, that gives the department what they can spend. So, my role after that is to make sure that they don't spend above that and they spend it properly by category and stuff. But I can't force them to spend their money. So, you know, I'm here answering where we have all these surpluses. I didn't create it.
I understand. Yeah. And, and like I said earlier when, when we started, I'm, I mean, I think we're happy that it's a surplus. You know, we, it's certainly better than hearing we have a deficit.
I mean, my department did have it and, you know, we've been having staffing issues as well, so...
Right. Yes.
I was just finally fully staffed and boom. Soon as it happens, the resignation letter comes in. So, I don't think I will ever not have it here where I'll be interviewing something. So, and we just had a retirement and I got another one coming up. So, it's like, you know, things happen. But, um, so, you know, like, one of my notes is public works operating costs in the budget we were in was 283,000 less just because the winter was so mild. That, so, but what we're, so when we, when Rob does his budget, they use five-year averaging on those accounts. So, we're going to wind up in a, in, in trouble soon because he's had four low, low, low. So, that number is low. And if we get back to average, he's gonna, he's going to need more money in those accounts. And if we don't have the contingency, I don't know where we're going to get it from.
To Councilor Allison.
I just, um, you know, I, I think this, like, the spreadsheet is really great. It does a really nice job of encapsulating everything. I do also think that managing our budget to be within 1.9% of our expected spend is, I get it that it's millions of dollars, but I would be really thrilled if having, you know, $200 million in, uh, income and then $81 million in debt so far, I had $10 million in case I couldn't, you know, somehow make something work, you know? And I think about it from, I get it that it's a town. It's not personal finance. But it is very personal when you're taking somebody else's money to provide services, right? And I think that we have done a good job of, of spending reserves where appropriate. I do believe that we spent some of our reserves last year to offset some of this budget, which was, of course, a historic high. And, you know, I'm, we all have different opinions on where we should be each year to, whether or not we're going to have any increase. But when you look at things like the cost of living, which is so nicely provided here in the spreadsheet, you know, that, that interest compounds. So, if we are better one year than the cost of living increase, but then we're worse another year, chances are, those aren't one-for-one offsetting. Plus, that cost of living has compounded. If it's 8.7%, for example, in '22, '23, um, and we were better with a 2% increase, but '20, '23, '24, we were at 3.2 versus our 3.8, we still are kind of netting out at, like, okay. Do I love that for us? No. But, you know, when we talk about for years, we've had, um, wage increases that averaged at least for the years that I was doing Board of Ed contracts and then the one year, or three years I've been here. It was like 1.9% and now we're finally getting to like the 2.5% which is actually the cost of living increase every year for Social Security. I mean, you know, we're, we're talking about people who are, who are currently working and we're trying to give them, you know, less money for their efforts than even the federal government has deemed appropriate for Social Security increases. Now, granted, I know that Social Security, speaking for the retired community, but this also covers, it's a 2.6 increase for SSI, year-over-year, average 10 years, right? So, if we think about it in terms of that, um, those are lower-paid populations. However, they are still part of our population, you know? And we have to consider all of those things when we are, you know, kind of taking into account how we treat our employees, which again, are the largest portion of our encumbrances. Then we have to take into account the crazy insurance market that we're in, the fact that we're self-insured, uh, which has been actually the vast majority of the increase associated with personnel. You know, we talk about these raises of 14 and 15% in that area specifically. And, um, you know, but meanwhile, we've seen the contracts. We know that there's all give-and-take within those contracts. You know, we, we offer a wage increase, but we're reducing some sort of encumbrance as far as what we're giving them in deductible. And, and we're offsetting it in ways that, um, you know, are good for both parties. But again, is that commensurate with how, you know, with the cost of living increases? I, I think we're, I think we're being fair at this point. I think that you cannot plan that somebody doesn't want to work in a place. For whatever reason that is, you can't plan that you won't get applicants. I know that we've had a lot of problems in our service areas, um, police, fire, town hall, linemen, water and sewer. Like, every single major branch of the town has had problems finding people at one time or another. It sounds like we're actually getting to a good place in a lot. I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Senna, that your department is now going through retirements, but, um, happy for those people. So, I, I do have to say that, um, I, I don't think that the trend of our, um, surplus is going to continue to be so, um, you know, fluid. I think that this year is probably a great reflection of where, um, we're going to end up. And so far, we're doing a, a pretty good job from what we've seen in our financials. Obviously, it's not final until the audit's out, but, um, it, I, I do, you know, this is a great conversation to have, especially ahead of, um, the budget season. It kind of gives us all a framework of like where we are and where we're going. And it lays out what each of us considers important. So, thank you for bringing this, uh, even, you know, I think we all agree to disagree on how money is managed and what, what we prefer versus others. But I think this is a really healthy conversation to have and I appreciate it, especially since I'm the largest critic here about how we do with the budget. So, um, um, yeah, that's it for me. It's just general comments, nothing really. No snark today.
Well, I've warned him disappointed. Councilor Laffin.
I was going to say, I think we have a difference of opinion on what snark is, but that's okay. Great. So, we've been plus or minus 1% to 2% for the past several years. Um, and I think what we have to keep in mind is that there is a watch, an active watch on spending. It's not like we decide the budget and then we put blindfolds on and just wait for all the departments to spend their money and hope that it comes out the way we kind of planned. In the 2021 budget, uh, it was a veto override. And into that budget, we had this big argument with Public Works because, um, the mayor of Public Works was not buying the snowplow that, that we put in the budget, that that budget put in there. It was a zero mil, uh, mil rate increase, um, and the mayor would not buy the snowplow. And, you know, we look back now and we ran into that, that general fund that year. I mean, there was an active particip, there was an active watch. And, uh, you know, how close or how accurate did everyone know? Did the mayor know, the administration? I don't know. But he, he must have known that he was going to cut into however many millions he had put into the budget from the general fund that year and a large ticket item like the snowplow. He didn't want to inflate it, inflate it even more. And he could have. He could, he could have put it in there and been like, see? You guys vetoed my increase and now we went down $3.5 million, like. So, I mean, it's, it's not just, here's the budget and we walk away. Uh, the, the mayor's office will be, will be constantly watching. And, and if I sent Vinnie to the grocery store and he came back with 1% to 2% in change, Vinnie with a Y, I'm sorry, the mayor, um, I'd be really impressed because I don't know that he knows his way around the grocery store. But aside from that, I think that would be pretty good versus getting a phone call of him trying to say, I have to put something back because I'm $2.50 over. What do you want me to put back? Um, and I hate to talk about the millions so relatively, uh, you know, as if the people at home, it's, you know, $2 million, that's nothing. At some point, we have to look at everything relatively, especially when you have so many spenders spread across town through all the departments. And then you have one administration trying to watch. I mean, we all get those reports every month. Nobody, nobody's jumping every month and pointing to, to a line and saying, look at this, look at this. This is where it's going to be. You know, nobody's done that. We've been getting that report for years. I also did jump on the Suddington website. Mr. Senna, uh, the, the report for us for Wallingford says that the town had $82.4 million in bonds and serial notes. Is that all of the long-term debt or is there, is there more debt above that, 82.4? I ask because the Suddington budget differentiates between a bonded amount and then other debt that they don't specify. They, they give the amount, but they don't say what it is for. That's okay. No, take your time. It's a, and I don't even, if you're, if you tell me you can't have the answer, it's fine. I'll keep going, but...
So, if you have the audit?
Yep.
If you go to page 131?
Okay.
Of our audit? Our total bonded for the town and schools is 51 million. And for the, uh, water and sewer is 30 million, 31 million? So, that 81 million is total.
And we, we don't have any other long-term debt or anything? Right.
Correct.
Okay. So, we also, it also...
So, just, just an item of correction though. So, when we talk about the 1% to 2% accuracy, then accuracy is correct, but we really can't count education in that number because any money you give to education is gone, right? So, if they, if they run a surplus, they hang on to it. So, that money is like, it's completely disappeared, correct?
Correct. And I would look at the, the final budget number on the expense side. That's your worst-case scenario.
Right.
Right? That's because we can't spend a dollar more than that without coming here.
So, then the 1% to 2%, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Reynolds. So, the 1% to 2% accuracy would also factor in. So, if you have unfilled positions though, then that sort of works against your accuracy, right? In, in a certain kind of way, so...
So, I, I don't, I didn't use the word accuracy, right? I, I said our, our results were within 1% of the budget. So, we're, each department is their own entity and they have the, you know, have to spend their thing. So... Each department had plans out what they think they need and that's their worst-case scenario. And if they don't, you know, they've been trained to that, if they don't need it, they don't spend it. And all that, that, that money going back, that's why we always have the, that money going back into your pocket is why we don't dip it to the 7.9%. So, it, it's good to have, you don't want everyone spending every dollar. But the, the, when they prepare their budget, that's what their best guess is, is what they want, what they're going to spend. So, and, you know, the, the payroll numbers, it's, that's the authority to spend. I, I can't hire someone unless I have the money. It's right, it's right on the, in the personnel rules. When I, when I request to go out for, you know, a position, I have to, you know, why and is there money? You have to answer that question. If there's no money, they can't even start the process.
No, and you know, Councilor Laffin's underlying point that everything is, like, the sky is not falling, right? And I think we all agree that the sky is not falling. It's just, you know, is there a, we, we've been at this a long time. A lot of us have been at this a long time, right? And your, this question is always like, is there a better system, right? Is there a better way to look at this? And so, I just think that's kind of the, that's why I appreciate this, this discussion. Uh, Councilor Reynolds.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify. We're only on the hook for 50 million of the 80-something million we're in debt to because the 30 million comes from the state through the phosphorus. So, it doesn't apply to the amount that we're not allowed to have. I thought that's what it said. Or is it, or is it that we're at like over 100 million, but it's at 80 and then there's 30? I can't...
So, the phosphorus project had two components. They had a grant component and then they have clean water fund notes, which is cheap money. It's 2% interest rate. That money that you're seeing on that exhibit, that's the loans.
Right. But I thought it said that we were, we weren't, that the 30 million from the, from the water treatment plant doesn't apply to what we can't carry by state statute.
Oh, you're talking the statement of debt limitations? Yeah, that, that's correct. But, I mean, those, those numbers are so, I've been doing this forever. I audit the towns. You know, seven times the, the budget, I, no one's ever going to get anywhere close to that.
And I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting. I'm just saying that if we use the 100 million from Suddington in our, whatever it is for us, it's less. I'm just saying that we, we don't need to use our own cash to pay for stuff if we can bond it. That's my point in this. I'm not sug, and, and to your point, yeah. If we have, if we have positions that need to be filled to improve the services and we budget for them every year and then we take the money and we pull it back because we didn't fill it, then I think we need to fill the positions, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you have a pattern?
All right. Uh, we got on to bonding a little bit and that's actually the next, um, on page 12. I just wanted to bring this up because this is, this will heavily affect, um, taxes and our long-term future projects. So, on page 12, it notes that we, at June 30th, 2024, the town had $82.4 million in bonds and serial notes outstanding versus 63.4 million last year. And there's a table there showing that. The town of Wallingford's total debt outstanding increased by $19 million or 30% during the '23, '24 fiscal year. So, that's, and we know that there's more coming, police station and, you know, big projects that we're talking about. So, I think that's something we need to focus on too because obviously that's, that's a huge effect on taxes and it's not something that you necessarily see as a budget. I mean, it's in our budget, you know, it's in those pages in the back, but it's not necessarily a line item. So, I think we need to just, uh, keep an eye on that too, that that's obviously going to heavily affect taxes for years, for, you know, if a project is bonded for 20 years, that's, that's taxes that we're paying for that for 20 years.
Can I just say one thing regarding? So, if we bond something, we now have to pay, raise taxes to pay the principal and the interest on it. When I pay cash, when we, when we pay cash for it, the only thing we're costing ourselves is the ability to invest that money, right? So, we're losing, so it's a balancing game. Do we want, do we want to keep the money in our pocket? How much interest do we get on it? Or do we want to bond it and then have to pay interest out? So, bonding is not a, bonding adds to the project, not, and it doesn't make it cheaper.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we've had, there's been philosophical discussions over the years on that. I think I'm, I'm one who prefers not to bond if we don't need to because I'm trying to save the interest. And I know other people like bonding because it's a more steady, uh, it's a more accurate, you know, it's kind of like cash versus accrual basis, right? Like, you're going to pay it upfront and front-load it that one year. You're going to carry it over 20 years. You have that more steady, uh, you know, steady accounting of what you're going to spend, but it's costing you much more in the long run. And that's why, uh, Mr. Senna and, and, you know, before you with, with Mr. Boz, I always ask when we have a project, I don't want to know the actual project. I want to know the project plus the bonding. So, what's this going to cost us in total over 20 years? And I'm sure I'll be asking more of that, uh, in the year coming up. But, uh, on page 138, staying on bonds, the, let's see. Oh, I think this is just, just a chart of what we were just talking about. So, page 138, if anyone's following along, um, that just has kind of a chart of the bonds and what we, what we are borrowing. The next few pages, I think I just made some notes because I think these are just interesting pages for even if the public is interested in this type of thing. There's, there's a lot of demographic information in the audit that I just find interesting. So for example, on page 140, there's our principal property taxpayers. So we have a listing of the companies who are our highest taxpayers. And again, we were talking earlier about business and being a business-friendly town. And, um, I know, uh, Mr. Crouch has been doing a good job in economic development in his new role. And I think it's just so, so important that we remain business-friendly and welcoming to, to new businesses and existing businesses to make sure they're happy and they want to stick around because that's, that's our tax base. And the more we can keep it centered on that, it's less that our residents get burdened with. So, uh, page 140 is just some interesting info there about our highest taxpayers. Uh, page 142, back to bonds again. So that shows our general purpose bonds drastically increased. I'm assuming that is the police station. Is that correct? Does it reflect on that page?
It was the police station and there was, I think there were some Board of Ed projects, the tailpiece, we had to pick up. But it was mostly the, the, um, police station. And just, um, you remember when you were talking about the award we get? So everything in the back here, that statistical section, that's all there to get the award. The auditors don't opine on this. It's, you know, these, these statistical tables back there are required to get the certificate, to get the award.
Okay, great. I, there, I mean, it's interesting information. So I'm glad they're there. The, um, the school bonds that are on that page. So I just want to talk about that for a second. It looks like the school or the Board of Ed, they've got outstanding bonds still. In 2015, they were in the neighborhood of 21 million. Uh, no, yeah, 21 million, correct? And then it looks like now they're around 17 million. But do you know, Mr. Senna, off the top of your head, what those are still for? Is that still like the roofing projects from years ago and, or just multiple different things?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I, I have the information available, but it's the tail pieces of all those projects. Of course, you know, these are 20-year bonds. So it's probably the roof project.
The window projects, maybe some of those, the wag, is that, that would be in there?
Yep.
Okay. All right. That might be helpful for us to see just with, with all the school discussions, if there is, if we could get that at some point. That might be helpful. I think that's usually with your budget anyway. Next. Oh, page 145, again, just some interesting demographic info. So that page shows, uh, the median household income in Wallingford, uh, percentage of unemployed. There's just, I think it, you know, I always like to kind of look at this when we go into the budget just to see what our, you know, what people in our town are making and when we're taxing them, you know, what's affordable? What's, what's affordable to the, the average family? And so that info on that page, I think, is maybe good for us to keep in mind when we go into the budget. Uh, page 146, our principal employers. Again, keeping, you know, businesses happy, I think is a, is paramount. And that just shows our, our biggest employers in town, which is just interesting info for me at least. And the last thing I have flagged here, uh, page 148, uh, last 10 fiscal years, the public safety section. So this, this is showing info on, for police, there's physical arrests, parking violations and traffic violations. For fire, it's showing the amount of emergency responses, fires and inspections. And I think it's, those are, those are two big budget items, obviously, every year when we look at police and fire. And I think looking at that 10-year, the stats for, of their 10 years, how it's increased, um, for both departments over the 10 years, I think when we go into the budget season, it's just interesting to pair that with their asks. And that is all I have for now. Um, I just wanted to say before I wrap up, unless anyone has anything else, I just, I appreciate this, Mr. Senna. I know I send you a lot of questions like this a lot and, uh, we kind of talk and I appreciate it. I think this was a good discussion to have tonight before we go into the budget so that we're, I know at budget time, it kind of gets really busy and we have a lot of meetings. And I think this is a better time to bring it up when we had a light agenda and we can all kind of concentrate on it. So I, I really appreciate everybody giving me that latitude to just kind of go over all of this. I know you can obviously all read it for yourselves, but I think it's a good discussion to have. And I think there were a few things that came up tonight that we will keep in mind going into the budget that I think will, uh, could help us out. And Mr. Senna, obviously, I very much appreciate all of your help. And, uh, I don't know if you were too thrilled when I asked you if you would talk about this, but you gave some very valuable information.
I think this was great and, you know, it's part of the job. But I do want to correct myself. I will not be emailing out that report tomorrow because we are closed.
Okay.
But you'll, you'll have it by the end of the week.
We'll be waiting with bated breath. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tada. Uh, thank you, Mr. Senna. Anytime we can talk accounting, accounting is an exciting time. Uh, and seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.